My pleasure ladies, it's Susan Black. Consider the Republican Christian Foundation. And it's every day just as well. Go home.
Here. Here. Yeah. Here. Here. Here.
Uh, check wrong?
Here. Yeah.
Captain Dealey?
Bill.
And Sarah Andrews, there.
You've all seen the copy of minutes for last state of meetings. There are no corrections or objections under the heading of the segment.
I'll move a second. Yes. Yes.
Yes, like announced this time in Bradford City Council, Hannah may hold an executive session anytime between this and next regular state of departmental course.
Mayor, I have a part. March two thousand twenty-four.
You don't have to read that.
Oh.
I gotta go.
Oh.
I'm sorry, what is the word?
The uh. Monthly report for public works, March of twenty twenty-four, thanks Chip.
Police, police city, we submit afterwards.
That's the Department of Property Maintenance for March.
Buildings and Health for March and Fire Department be submitted at a later date.
Correspondents, do they have anything they'd like to offer? And we have a bid opening for woodworking machine. We got a pile of them.
Wow.
A pile of them.
Yes.
We're out.
So I'm gonna start with first one. This was received, I believe, April first. Split off from Brian Seed's building account, Jewett.
I take it that's where you gentlemen are here?
Yes.
Alright, gonna be a little while. Must be some good stuff there.
Uh, this is Cushy Qua Development Corporation. They bid on item two. The Powermatic table saw. Slash with extended table and fence for a bid of two hundred and twenty dollars. They bid on item three, American woodworking plane, planer molder, uh, bid of eight hundred and eight dollars. Item five, the Powermatic chain mortise machine model fifteen, a bid of two hundred and two dollars. Item number eight, W and H planer molder model, uh, bid of a hundred and six dollars. Item number twenty-one, antique cart number five, um, a bid of sixty-two dollars. Yeah, right. This bid was also received on April first at nine forty-five AM. Uh, this is from a. Yuri Weaver. Um, he bid on item seven, the SCM Shaffer T one thirty with a patch masterwork power fence feed device. Uh, that was a bid amount of two thousand dollars. Item number nine, the Camco one thousand belt sander model J F dash six five nine dash one, twenty horsepower, three saves, four hundred and eighty volts, bid of one thousand dollars. And that's all he bid on. Sorry, you're gonna have to make new tricks.
Oh yeah.
Do you wanna order pizza something when we went?
We had a significant, real lot of them, but I don't know if you can see that. There's sort of over seven thousand views on our, on the Facebook page, so.
This is a bid from Fred Charlton. Um, he simply put, I would like to place a bid on the two by four railroad factory cart. And stored inside of OECD garage. My bid is twenty-seven dollars. I did not put night in another of that.
Yeah, I'm just on the first quote, I believe, antique cart.
So many, so many bid on. They collect one of these property. About the direction of new producing to make them look old, um.
This bid was received April second, three sixteen PM. From my Hannah, Hannah Lambert. Um, bid of a hundred and fifty dollars on item number one, the Tanwitz table saw with attached power feeder device. Uh, there's a bid for item number two, the Powermatic saw with extended table and fence for six hundred dollars. Item number three, American woodworking planer molder. Uh, planers sixteen inch, um, wide, seven point five foot bed. Uh, that's a bid amount of three hundred and fifty dollars. Item number five, the Powermatic chain mortise machine, uh, that's been a three hundred and fifty dollars. Item number nine, the Camco one thousand belt sander. That's a bid of fifteen hundred dollars. Item number ten, the Oliver bandsaw. Bid amount of four hundred dollars. Item number fourteen, the edge sander, that's a bid of three hundred dollars. Um, at the bottom, they said they would pay, um, seven thousand, seven dollars and fifty cents for the whole lot of all items. Give or take a few items depending on what they are, but for, for, for the whole lot, seven thousand, seven dollars and fifty cents. This bid was received April fourth, four.
We've already had a fraction of this many bids from anything before. We've already, we're near this many bids before.
This bid is from Marvin Legal. Clearfield. He bid on item number eleven, the Watkins Molder for eighteen hundred and fifty-one dollars. Item thirteen, the Grizzly stroke sander for a hundred and fifty dollars. Item eighteen, the Baker toe motor for two hundred dollars. Is it? Bid was, um, received on April sixth of twenty twenty-four. This bid is from Salvatore Scalzo, a part in PA. Uh, please accept this letter as my bid proposal for the Powermatic table saw. I offer six hundred and fifty dollars based on condition that I have observed in the picture.
What was the name?
Salvatore Scalzo, S C L Z O. Bid was received April fourth. From Gary Howard. He bid on item number one, the Tanwitz table saw for ninety-five dollars. Item number two, the Powermatic table saw with a bid amount of a hundred and twenty-six dollars. Item number three, the American woodworking planer molder, bid amount seventy-six dollars. Item number nine, the Camco thou- one thousand belt sander for a bid amount of four hundred and fifty-one dollars. Item number ten, the Oliver bandsaw in a bid amount of twenty-seven dollars. Item number twelve, the bus machine works planer, bid amount of three hundred and sixty-one dollars. Item number thirteen, the Grizzly stroke sander, bid amount twenty-seven dollars. Item number fourteen, the edge sander, bid amount twenty-seven dollars. Item number seventeen, the ducting miscellaneous, miscellaneous pieces of dust collection, bid amount twenty-six dollars. Item number eighteen, the Baker toe motor, bid amount seventy-six dollars. Item number nineteen, the Kizer compressor, Caesar compressor, bid amount twenty-six dollars. Item number twenty, transformer model, number T two A five three three four zero one five, the bid amount of twelve dollars. Item number twenty-one, the antique cart, a bid amount of seventy-six dollars. Bid was received on April fifth, twelve ten PM. This from the Jeffrey Dilucent, Dilucenti. Close enough. Uh, he bid on item number three, the American woodworking planer, uh, uh, bid amount of one hundred and one dollars. Item number nine, the Camco one thousand belt sander, a bid amount of three hundred and one dollars. Item number twelve, the bus machine works planer, a bid amount of one hundred and one dollars. We're getting there.
Are you even halfway yet?
Maybe. Bid was received on, um, April fifth, two fifty PM.
Are you going in order they were received or anything?
I just didn't order the pile that I got, yes.
Are they in order they were received?
I put them in order.
Check maybe he's, poor gentleman back here, we get open names.
This is, uh, received from Brent Robert. He bid on item number eight, the W and H plane, planer molder, bid amount of three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Bid was received on April fifth, twelve twenty PM. From a Christopher Schmidt. He bid on item number seven, the SCM Sharper, a bid amount of eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and seventy-nine cents. Item number nine, the Camco one thousand belt sander, a bid amount of eleven hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-nine cents. Item number twenty, the transformer model, number T two A five three three four oh one five, bid amount forty-five dollars. And the antique carts, a bid amount of, uh, this item number twenty-one, the antique carts, a bid amount of one hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Getting there. Okay.
More in the fourth one.
We have two hundred and the toe motor is seven. The toe motor run?
We're not sure.
That's great needs motor.
Bid was received April fifth.
We put the propane on, but it's a wing gets stolen, so I'm not sure if Jason tried it or not.
Bid is from John. I don't even know how to pronounce his last name. Is that a world?
Wow. Often Shrek the butter.
Uh, yeah. So, um. He placed a bid of three hundred and fifty-one dollars for item number five, the Powermatic number, um, fifteen. Powermatic model fifteen. Chain mortise machine, also a bid of thirty-five dollars for item number twenty-one, a lot of railroad carts. Bid was received April eighth at four forty-two PM. From an Emmanuel Miller. He bid on item number two, the Powermatic table saw for six hundred and fifty dollars, bid amount. Item number four, Powermatic drill press, bid amount of four hundred and fifty dollars. Item number seven, the SCM Shaffer T one thirty, bid amount eight hundred and fifty dollars.
We got your voting yet?
I hope you weren't the name that we butchered.
Are you still gonna give me?
Uh, this bidder was received on April eighth at one fifty-three PM. From a Christopher Colusa. And he bid on item number one, the Tanwitz table saw, bid amount of one hundred and fifty-five dollars. Item number four, the Powermatic drill press, bid amount three hundred and eighty-six dollars. Item number seven, the SCM Shaffer, bid amount of two hundred and eighty-six dollars. Item number nine, the Camco one thousand belt sander, bid amount of nine hundred and thirty-six dollars. And item number twenty, the transformer model, number two two eight five three three four oh one five, a bid amount of twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Bid was received on four nine. That was received from Henry Hertberger. He bid on item number two, the Powermatic table saw, bid amount of four hundred dollars. Item number four, the Powermatic drill press, bid amount of six hundred and sixty dollars. Item number five, the Powermatic chain mortise, bid amount of twelve hundred and twenty dollars. Item number seven, the SCM Shaffer T one thirty, bid amount nine hundred dollars. Item number eight, the W and H planer mo- molder, bid amount one hundred dollars. Item number nine, the Camco one thousand belt sander, bid amount thirteen hundred and thirty dollars. Item number fourteen, the edge sander, bid amount one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Bid was received April ninth, one thirty-five PM.
It might know about us, it's always not here.
That's probably the thing. Bid was received from Tim Burkehouse. He bid on the SCM T one thirty Shaffer, three hundred and fifty dollars. The W and H planer molder, seventy-five dollars. The ducting miscellaneous dust collecting piping, a bit of seventy-five dollars. Bid was received three twenty-two PM on April tenth. From a Tom Eagle and or Alex Zawaki. Um, they bid. Twelve thousand fifty dollars on the entire group, um. Or they bid specifically on the following items. Item number one, the Tanwitz table saw, eight hundred dollars. Item number two, the Powermatic table saw, bid amount six hundred dollars. Um, item number six, the blunt lay, blunt lathe, bid amount four hundred dollars. Item number seven, the SCM Shaffer. Bid amount one thousand fifty dollars. Um, item number eleven, the Watkins Molder, bid amount thirty-five hundred dollars. Item number eighteen, the Baker toe motor, bid amount one thousand twenty-five dollars. Uh, bid, um, item number twenty-one, the antique carts, bid amount three hundred dollars. Two left. Wanna take a recess before I get to the.
Oh, but we've already had a request that you start over and read it more slowly.
Bid was received in four ninety, three forty-three. Leroy Martin. He bid. Placed a bid on the amount of eight thousand dollars for everything on this list. If you can do an itemized price list with, where are the pages? Last, received on four nine at three oh nine PM. From a Kevin Sheldon. Um, bid for all equipment of the, in the amount of five thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. If bulk bid is not accepted, he's gonna itemize it below. Um, item number two, the Powermatic table saw, bid amount one hundred and sixty-five dollars. Item number four, the Powermatic drill press, bid amount fifty-seven dollars. Item number five, the Powermatic chain mortise, bid amount seventy-eight dollars. The blunt lathe, the item number six, bid amount fifty-seven dollars. Item number seven, the SCM Shaffer, bid amount one hundred and sixty-five dollars. Item number eight, the W and H planer molder, bid amount one hundred and fifty-six dollars. Item number nine, the Camco one thousand belt sander, bid amount five hundred and ten dollars. Item number ten, the Oliver bandsaw, bid amount one hundred and eighty dollars. Item number fourteen, the edge sander, bid amount three hundred and five dollars. Item number seventeen, the ducting miscellaneous pieces, bid amount fifty-one dollars. Item number eighteen, the Baker toe motor, bid amount sixteen hundred and seventy-five dollars. And item number twenty-one, the antique carts, bid amount one hundred and eighty dollars.
Sarah, where is the, where is the equipment?
Equipment is our, at our facility, at, at half of the time.
Oh, I see.
Would you like to, uh?
Well, we'll take, we'll take those anywhere for you. For, for action for next meeting. You guys catch up, we're gonna, we're gonna have to review these and we'll defer action to the next meeting. Do we some time?
You know, Peter, just sitting out there, and I'm at the wall, I can't fit, I can't, for you out there, I mean, just to sit out there.
You hear, you heard here?
We're well aware.
The machine I've been thirty-five other than that, that's not the question.
It's out in the rain?
Well, it was advertised as it is. No, we're doing the best we can. It's been, equipment that's been outside unfortunately for quite a long time. The owner of the equipment left it sitting outside.
Oh, you wanna make, you wanna make sure she has your name and everything? Cause we, we reach out to before that.
It's, it's, she has game.
Alright.
I understand as is.
Yeah.
But as is is not getting better.
We got you, we got you.
Because she was covered in the tar.
I haven't been able to pay this guy.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who are we deciding on?
Yeah, it's a good idea, once you make your decision, yes.
I have one more piece of correspondence here. Um, proclamation, City of Bradford, Office of the Mayor, I'm not gonna read this entirely given that she just did. So one's best word, whereas this ninth day of April twenty twenty-four designates this week as National Library Week, whereas our nation's libraries and librarians play a vital role in preventing millions of people with the resources they need to live, learn, work, govern, and thrive in the twenty-first century, and whereas Americans use libraries to find jobs, to learn, to read, to be literate online, to find vital health facts, to research environmental. Environment and diets, and to find food for our souls, and whereas free people and free libraries, America's libraries are cornstones of our democracy, librarians are the guardians of free access to information and resources, libraries are for everyone, everywhere. And I will not read this as hard, it'll be available for your view if you need to stay longer after the meetings, so. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Tom, real mayor of the City of Bradford, on behalf of the City Council and a citizen of Bradford, Pennsylvania, McKean County, do hereby proclaim National Library Week, April seventh to thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. And make sure that you get copy of that. Oh, thank you. Now comes time to petition here, visitors. You miss us or something? Okay, do you have anything to offer, fans? Okay, old business, none, new business, gonna hear from our new houseman.
Three seven five six two, that quote and proof being to McHale Fabricators. Parks, second.
Um, just one second, did. Counselor Miss Propper?
Yes.
Cora?
Yes.
Lobis?
Yes. Yes.
Maryra?
Yes.
Number three seven five six three, approved quote and payment to Quill Accounts and Finance. Second.
Counselor Miss Propper?
Yes.
Cora?
Yes.
Lobis?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Maryra?
Yes.
Number three seven five six four, authorize the transfer of monies from the General Fund, zero one, account to the Capital Reserve, one eight, account, Accounts and Finance. Second.
Counselor Miss Propper?
Yes.
Cora?
Yes.
Lobis?
Yes. Yes.
Maryra?
Yes, number three seven five six five, authorize the proper officer to save Bradford to inter, intermediary lending program loan agreement with, for his family vision, L C OECD.
Second. Yes. 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 Yeah.
Yes, number three seven five six six, approve payment to ID booth for same to Old City Hall OECD.
Second.
Counselor Miss Propper?
Yes. 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 Yes.
Yes, number three seven five six seven, approve payment to Hall Electric Inc. In Bradford for lighting renovations for suite three zero two at Old City Hall OECD.
Second. Yes. Yes. Yeah. Yes.
Yes, number three seven five six eight, approve you to be on wholesale supply and change sand for doors at Old City Hall OECD.
Yeah. Yes. Yes.
Yes, number three seven five six nine, approve payment for new fee of supply in Bradford for plumbing renovations at Old City Hall OECD.
Second. Yes. 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 Yes.
Yes, number three seven five seven zero, accept proposal from Grand Screen Arts and Landscaping for new planning or replacement planning on Bolton Street and Old City Hall OECD.
Second. Yes. Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
Number three seven five seven one, approved payment through McKean County Assessment Office, Accounts and Finance. Second. Yes. 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 Yeah.
Yeah.
And three seven five seven two, authorize an approved payment to advertise and request for. Proposal for a UCC certified code inspector for the City of Bradford, Accounts and Finance. Okay.
Counselor Miss Propper?
Yes.
Cora?
Yes. Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Maryra?
Yes.
Number three seven five seven three, authorize the city treasurer to open a certificate of deposit account at North West Bank, Accounts and Finance. Second. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Maryra?
Yes, I'd like to thank you all for coming and seeing you. There'll be no further business for Bradford City Council. I've been in motion during the meeting.
Yes, I'd like to thank you all for coming and seeing you for the business pool, Bradford City Council, I've been in motion during the meeting. Uh, Chris, second.
Second. I will.
Uh, Councilor's proffer?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.